Kathy Griffith. Jason Blair.
Here.
Lynn Lewis. Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here. Did you join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is the consent doc. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held January 2nd, 2024. Item B, accept 800.05 square feet of permanent right-of-way and 400.08 square feet of temporary construction easement from Kevin R. Rafe and Pamela J. Rafe for construction of the South Bryant and Southeast Street and drainage improvement project. Item C, accept 1,248.28 square feet of permanent right-of-way and 1,662.49 square feet of temporary construction easement from Leonard C. Mason and Cheryl Fay Mason for construction of this South Bryant and Southeast 4th Street and drainage improvement project. Item D, adopt resolution number 7223 approving the December 2023 community development block grant disaster recovery program internal audit report. Item E, approve a one-year contract extension with Weaver and Tidwell LLP for the CDBG-DR internal audit services. Item F, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2023 and 2024 in the amount of $3,573,419.21.
Motion to approve.
Second.
If a motion is second, we call the vote, please.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Item carries. Item three, consider approval of a new job description for financial technology support specialist in the finance department and assign it to pay grade 111 of the salary table approved by the city council on June 20th, 2016 in accordance with the budget approved by city council for fiscal year 23-24.
Vice Mayor and Council, this new job description was requested in order to more closely align with the duties assigned to the employee currently and the assistant to the finance director position. Over the last few years, this position has evolved to encompass more technology tasks and fewer accounting tasks due to our continuing use of Tyler Technologies' MUNIS system. This new job description will more accurately describe the duties and responsibilities assigned. If this job is approved, the title will be changed to the Financial Technology Support Specialist. Staff recommends approval and no change to the placement of this budgeted job description in pay grade 111 of the city's salary table. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
If a motion is second, we call the vote.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Item passes. Item four, consider approval of a revised job description for the recreation coordinator in the Parks and Recreation Department. Change the job title to Program Coordinator and assign it to pay grade 110 of the salary table approved by city council on June 20th, 2016 in accordance with the budget approved by city council for fiscal year 23-24.
Vice Mayor and Council request that this item be tabled at this time.
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
To table item four?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call the vote?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Item is tabled. Item five, consider approval of a revised job description for Environmental Services Manager in the Community Development Department and assign it to pay grade 117 of the salary table approved by city council on June 20th, 2016 in accordance with the budget approved by city council for fiscal year 23-24.
Vice Mayor and Council would request that this item also be tabled.
Make a motion to table item five?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table the item. Will you call the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Item is tabled. Number, item six, consider approval of an agreement with Half Associates in the amount of $340,690 for professional engineering services for the Main Street reconstruction project from Broadway Avenue to Eastern Avenue.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is the fifth of six projects that were approved by the voters as part of the 2023 GO bond for design only under this bond issue. We are recommending that Half Associates be recommended to go ahead and be awarded the contract to design the project.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Item passes. Item seven, consider approval of change order number two with Allen Contracting in the amount of $14,234 for traffic striping and a signal controller upgrade for the Eastern Avenue reconstruction project from Southeast 4th Street to Southeast 19th Street.
This project included three additional, or three items that call for the change order. This change order addresses the additional mobilization fee to come in and stripe the intersection of 19th and Eastern as, and then stripe all the way back to 13th Street once it was completed. We felt that those citizens and residents in that area warranted paying the additional $2,200 to get it striped so that they could utilize the intersection instead of waiting till it was completely finished. A second, the biggest cost item on this was the existing controller and malfunction management unit was not able to run the flashing yellow arrow movement, left turn for yellow. If nobody's coming, they could, they could advance. The original plans called to use the existing controller and the existing controller was just sold that it wasn't able to be able to do that. So we had to substitute parts in this existing controller. With that, we'd recommend approval of change order number, we would, first, I need to explain that this is actually, should have been listed as change order number six. The reason that we're calling it change order, or we need to amend it to change order number six is when we did do change order number one, it had five items that were part of it. And I can't explain why we went ahead and approved it as originally as five separate change orders that had items in change order number one, but it was originally approved as change order one through five. And therefore, we need to make this, amend the motion to approve this as change order number six.
Make a motion that we amend item number six to be change order, seven, sorry, seven, to be change order number six in lieu of two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. And now we need to approve the motion, correct? I mean, approve the item.
I think so. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
If a motion is second, will you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Item passes. Item eight, consider approval of amendment number one in the amount of $31,000 to the agreement with Freezen Nichols for additional hydraulic analysis and structural design of the drainage system for Southwest 19th Street and Santa Fe Avenue intersection reconstruction project.
Upon completion of the traffic study for this particular intersection, it called for additional stories than what we normally anticipated at this intersection for westbound traffic on 19th Street turning south onto Santa Fe. And in doing so, widening, it required widening further to the east than originally planned when we did the original design scope for the project. Just on the, on the east side of CVS, there's a, quite an extensive drainage area that everything comes into that one area and by widening it, we need to provide an area so that we can do the pedestrian trail and bicycle path to go across where what used to be an open channel area. And plus, there's, there's three, as it leaves this area, there are three existing corrugated metal pipe that are in pretty bad shape and we need to replace those at this point in time. And we decided because we are having to put the trail over the top of it, that we needed to go ahead and do a concrete box instead of the corrugated metal pipe. The total amount is 31,000 and we'd recommend approval of the amendment number one to the contract.
Make a motion to approve, second.
If a motion is second, we call the vote, please.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Item passes. Item nine, consider awarding a contract in the amount of $67,100 to KC Demolition and Dirt Work for the demolition of the Tillison Cabinet Shop located at 137 Southeast 4th Street for construction and maintenance of the Southeast Street Railroad Underpass Project.
Vice Mayor and Council, we received three proposals for demolition of the Tillison Cabinet Shop. They range from the low $67,100 to a high of $82,225. We would recommend approval of KC Demolition and Dirt Work, who was the lowest responsible proposal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
If a motion is second, we call the vote, please.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Item passes. Item 10, consider approval of ordinance number 104724 amending Part 12, Chapter 2, Article A, Section 12-206E of the Moore Land Development Code by removing tattoo and/or body piercing parlors from the Retail Sales and Services Restricted Use Classification and adding the same to Personal Services Restricted Use Unit Classification, providing for severability and providing for a repealer.
Vice Mayor and Council, this proposed ordinance was developed for consideration after researching for our current rezoning case under consideration at the Planning Commission, rezoning item number 1042, to allow a use-on-review within the C2 zoning district for a tattoo parlor. As we go through our considerations, I just, it is important to note that we are not considering the rezoning request tonight. That is currently under consideration at the Planning Commission. It has been tabled for, for us to consider this ordinance. And we are only considering tonight in which use unit classification a tattoo parlor should be placed. So just remember to limit the discussion to, to that topic, please. So currently, the tattoo parlors are listed under Retail Sales and Services Restricted. This is a use unit classification that includes things such as appliance repair, used furniture sales and rentals, used clothing sales, food banks, pawn shops, blood plasma donation centers, and it also includes the tattoo and body piercing parlors. This use, Retail Sales and Services Restricted, is a use that is permitted on review, which means it has to go through Planning Commission and City Council for specific review in the C2, C3, and C4 zoning categories, zoning districts. It is allowed by right, meaning that it doesn't require any review from Planning Commission or Council in the C5 and C6 zoning categories. So as staff, we struggle to justify how tattoo parlors are similar to some of those uses that I just mentioned in the Retail Sales and Services Restricted. How is it similar to a food bank or a blood donation center? They don't necessarily have similar functions or products or even performances out in the real world. When, I'm going back in time, when tattoo parlors were legalized in Oklahoma many years ago, we placed it specifically in a, using a classification that required a lot of review for most categories, zoning categories, because we were afraid that there would be such a proliferation of these establishments around town. But as you can see, that really hasn't happened. Over time, the market has evened out. So in considering that and additionally, because some other uses in the category are so objectionable that as staff, we hesitate to recommend approval of those uses almost anywhere in the city. We wanted to do a little bit more research and what that typically includes is reaching out to our other communities in the metro system to see how they handle certain uses. So after a survey of our surrounding cities, Norman, Edmund, and Oklahoma City do allow tattoo parlors as a permitted use, so no review necessary, in the closest equivalent to Moore's C2 zoning district. So the question then became, is Moore's zoning code outdated when it comes to dealing with tattoo parlors? So this proposed ordinance in front of you today would remove tattoo and body piercing parlors from the Retail Sales and Services Restricted Use Unit Classification and reclassify it as Personal Services Restricted. The effect of doing that would be that, that use unit classification, Personal Services and Restricted is a use allowed by right in C2, C3, C4, and C6. So it's a much more universally accepted use for properties. So what are some of the other uses in the Personal Services Restricted category? The typical uses included in this category are things like photography and art studios, driving schools, like a Brown's Driving School, barber shops, beauty parlors, dance and music academies, and other classroom-related businesses. So if the ordinance is approved tonight, the tattoo and body piercing parlor would be inserted into this use unit classification because we did feel that it had more similarities to the barber shops and beauty parlors than it did a food bank or a blood donation center. So your options tonight is many. You can approve the ordinance as is. You can choose to deny the ordinance. Or there has been some concern about this issue for several weeks. I've heard from some residents and also some Planning Commission members who are opposed to this reclassification. They are fearful of the loss of control, that City Council would have an option to review this item. So another option that you would have would be to table it. After all, the tattoo parlors may not be appropriate in all areas, but we definitely know that they're really not that similar to a food bank. So there are other options. You can create a new classification to put some of those other very objectionable uses in to separate it from a use like a tattoo parlor. Or you could create a special use permit for tattoo body piercing parlors. A special use permit is, you go through the rezoning process every time that you have an application for this, but the special use permit does allow you to place other restrictions on the, the business. So as an example, and I'm not saying this is what would end up happening, but I'm just giving an example. If you went the special use permit way, that you could place a limitation on tattoo parlors being located 1,000 feet from any other tattoo parlor, that would, you know, eliminate the fear of congregating this type of use in one area. And, you know, the list goes on as to what kind of limitations you could put on the business. So that is a brief summary of what we've been working on past several weeks. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
I do.
Yes.
So help me understand, we've got Retail Sales and Services Restricted Use.
Yes.
And it has to be reviewed every time?
In a, yes, in only a C2, C3, and C4 zoning district. It has to be reviewed every time.
Okay. And so this one is Personal Services Restricted Use.
Mm-hmm.
So why wouldn't this one need to be reviewed every time also? That's missing that.
Okay, so if the council decides to place this use into the personal sale, I'm sorry, the Personal Services Restricted, even I get tongue-tied, it would be allowed by right. I might have misspoken, but it would be allowed by right, meaning that there would be no council review. It would be allowed by right in C2, C3, C4, and C6.
Okay. And this particular, where it's at right now is in C3?
The, this use is currently in the Retail Sales and Services Restricted, which is allowed only on a review in C2, C3, and C4.
Okay. And so we're talking about moving it to a different C category?
So that would be a rezoning and we're definitely not talking about a rezoning. What we're talking about is reclassifying it into a different use unit classification that would be allowed by right in more commercial categories. So it would be a reclassification of a business into a different use unit classification.
Okay. So I'm just gonna talk out loud. Because, and, and I'm not opposed to tattoo shops, all right, so, but because every time one of them comes before us, there's always usually an outcry of some kind. My personal opinion is that we still make it possible for them to get approved, but it still has to be reviewed. And so whatever method is the most practical for that, that's my suggestion, so.
So in order to do that, would it then require a rezoning? And if we rezone it, then are, does it still have to come in front every time?
Yes. So if one idea that you could pursue, you as in staff, sorry, that staff could pursue, would be to create a special use permit for tattoo and body piercing parlors. So we have some uses that are allowed only under a special use permit. And it's because those uses, although they aren't necessarily objectionable, they just need more restrictions placed on the business.
They're feasible some places, but not others.
Right. So like one example would be wind turbines. I mean, I'm just trying to give you an example. And it gives different locational requirements. You know, it has to be so many feet from a property line and on and on. You could put a tattoo and body piercing parlor, create that as a special use permit. So that would require Planning Commission and council review every time, no matter what zoning district they're trying to go in. But it would separate that from those objectionable uses like the food banks and the blood donation centers. And with the special use permit, you could put on limitations, like a distance requirement to other tattoo parlors or a distance requirement from other uses, land uses out there. That would be an option that the council has. And I mean, obviously, staff is willing to facilitate that if that's the direction you want to go.
Have any other questions of Elizabeth?
Any other opinions?
Is there anyone here to speak?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's.
Okay, so I have some folks here signed to speak before we get started. And you'll have five minutes to speak and please state your name and address for the record when you come up. And please only address the council. First up is Nita Wallinger.
Good evening, council members. I'm Nita Wallinger. My address is 908 Northeast 21st Street, Moore, and I'm in the Avondale Edition. I'm here to speak against the proposal to reclassify tattoo and body piercing businesses as proposed. Tattoo shops cater only to adults, unlike the other businesses listed in this category. Adult-only businesses don't belong in or near family-oriented neighborhoods where residents should feel safe walking and having their children play outside. Tattoo businesses often bring crime and other undesirable outcomes. Exterior areas of the buildings are often not maintained and excessive noise, litter, and trash can be a problem along with more serious crimes like public fighting, illegal drugs, invasion of privacy involving hidden cameras inside the buildings, sexual assaults, and even acts of murder. You can read the internet and find out stories that have happened across the country in all of these areas. This owner of the tattoo shop near my neighborhood is well aware of the problem of illegal drugs because he replied to a Google review from a client who, he, the owner, accused the client of smoking marijuana outside his previous business location. Avondale Square tenants will suffer if situations like this occur and many families will not bring their children to businesses near a tattoo shop. I have personally observed this tattoo shop operating illegally several times. A tattoo business should not be allowed in Avondale Square. I am concerned not only for my neighbors, but for the businesses located there. If this were your neighborhood, would you want a tattoo shop located in the vicinity of, the near vicinity of your home? I respectfully urge you to vote no on the proposed zoning change. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Arthur Rymann.
Good evening. Art Rymann. I live at 824 Northeast 20th Place in the Avondale Edition and was here last week for the zone, rezoning, yeah, kinda, gotta get all my paperwork straight. And while we were at that meeting, this discussion came up about pay the city council was thinking about just changing the wording and in that case, the zoning comes mute, is a mute point at that point. So I was like, well, I gotta go voice my opinion about this. Again, I don't think a tattoo shop is the same as a nail salon or a beauty parlor or barber shop. Nothing against tattoos, but I don't think it's a good fit where they're wanting to put it. That's just my opinion. I think real estate values will go down in the neighborhood, neighborhood behind there. And if that starts to happen, I know several people that are gonna be selling their houses and moving out of Moore or moving out of that area, find someplace that doesn't have a tattoo parlor right up front. I just urge you to not change the wording and then we'll fight the rezoning battle whenever that happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anybody else signed to speak. Would anybody else like to speak? Well, from my standpoint, I really don't have an issue with tat, with a tattoo shop. I, if it was outside my neighborhood, I probably wouldn't care. However, some residents have expressed a concern and I think maybe Elizabeth's solution of having it where it could go in that location, but would have to be reviewed each time, maybe as a, as a happy medium and as a, as a solution to it, where they're still allowed in that area, if, if approved by Planning Commission and council. But I'm also open to whatever you guys. I'm not, I'm not in favor necessarily of the rezoning because that changes perhaps the whole rezoning. Then it opens up to things like pawn shops and, and all that, and I'm definitely not in favor of that. So.
I don't have any qualms with tattoo shops as well. I wouldn't care if one was outside my neighborhood. There is one kinda close and, you know, we have one by Louise and Gogo Sushi. And to my knowledge, there's no evidence of crime or misconduct at any of these locations and there has not been historically in our town.
So if we tabled this item?
Yeah, that's what we'll do.
I think is, but what are we, I mean, are we looking for staff to come back with? Because the way it's currently zoned, I mean, they, it has to come before council. We've got, so if, if we're gonna table it and ask?
Because, but, but the way it would be, she would reclassify it that, or not she, the, the staff would bring it to us to reclassify it, that it would not be in with pawn shops and it would not be a rezoning. It would be a permissive use that would then have to come. So if you have a tattoo shop that wants to go in there each time, it would have to come in front of the council not to rezone it in that same category it's in. Did I explain that right?
So would that also require rezoning of the building?
No. So a special use parent is, you could. So a special use permit is, you could kinda consider it just an overlay over the current zoning district. So the, the building would still remain, like, let's say, the Louise example, the, I forget what it's called, but I go by it all the time. That building would still stay C-three, it would just have a special use permit for a tattoo parlor. It would not cover any other use except for the tattoo parlor. And again, Council could make whatever restrictions on a tattoo business that you feel is appropriate.
So then if that tattoo parlor moves out, does another one automatically get to come in by right? They would have to get approved, correct?
They would have to get approved.
Everyone would have to get approved.
Yeah, individually.
And so then it would be up to, again, this, then it would come back and it'd be up to the, to the Planning Commissioner, Council, whether or not Avondale one was approved, but at least it would have to come, and there'd be restrictions either way.
Correct. If, if the Council would like to go that direction, what would happen is, I would let the applicant know that it's been tabled. He can choose to either table his item again at Planning Commission and wait till, for a code change, or he can choose to move forward. Whatever he chooses to do is what we would do, and then if he goes forward, it would just move through the process, and Lauren Purcell in my office is handling that.
If we went with the other suggestions brought up, would that make us the only place in the metro to have such restrictions?
So Midwest City has restrictions. Midwest City does not just allow them. So we would not be the only community in the metro, but we would be a minority.
Okay.
What about Norman?
Norman allows them by right. They consider them to be more akin to a beauty, beauty salon.
It's a younger feeling neighborhood. I get that, yeah. I'm in favor of tabling it tonight, giving us some time to do some research, and then let Elizabeth and her staff draft a new resolution that we would review next meeting. That's my opinion. I put that in a form of a motion.
Motion. Okay. I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Louis, excuse me, Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item carries.
And just for an explanation, because it has been tabled tonight, we will let the applicant choose which way he wants to go, and the neighbors will be notified if he chooses to withdraw it.
Okay. And if he doesn't, it will be on the next Planning Commission meeting?
Yes, February thirteenth.
February thirteenth.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, everyone. Item eleven, consider authorizing the budget to purchase of three Harris XL one eighty-five M mobile radios and four Harris XL ninety-five portable radios from L three Harris in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred, twenty-eight dollars, thirty-five cents, using the City of Norman's contract as the lowest quote.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a continuation of replacement for our two thousand and six model Motorola radios that are way past their service life, and utilizing the Norman contract is four percent cheaper than the state bid or state contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. We'll now recess the City Council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item twelve is a consent doc. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held January second, twenty twenty-four. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four in the amount of one million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. We'll now recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item thirteen is a consent doc. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held January second, twenty twenty-four. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four in the amount of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a, oh.
Oh, second.
Sorry, a motion and a second. We call the vote.
Come on, don't break the machine.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. We'll now recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Item fourteen is roll call. We call the roll.
Kathy Griffith? Jason Blair?
Here.
Lynn Lewis? Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here. Item fifteen is a consent doc. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call the vote.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. We'll now recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting. Item sixteen, new business. Item A, citizens forum for items not on the agenda. Do you have anybody else signed up to speak? Would anybody else like to speak? Item B, items of the City Council trustees.
Brooks, this, and you may not know the answer to this question right away, and that's fine, but just out of curiosity, the project for Broadway to Eastern, we're gonna make sure we time that in such a way that any construction want to interfere with the underpass, those timeframes are gonna be separate since we're entering the planning phase? Okay. I was like, boy, that would be a nightmare with both.
Yeah, we're, everything's being sequenced around the underpass.
That'll be post-Fourth Street.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Item C, items from the City Trust Manager.
I'd like to offer congratulations to the Parks Department and the Police Department for the Special Olympics event that they had last Friday. Close to a thousand people attended, and it was a very successful event. And then we're, we've had a stretch of really cold weather. When we had, the last time we had this in twenty twenty-one, we had some issues with our water wells. We made improvements right after that, so we wouldn't have to go through this again. Had a meeting with Robert Pistole earlier this afternoon, and we've had no issues, so it was well done.
Good job, Robert.
Great. Item seventeen is executive session, section three oh seven, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statute permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the City Attorney that the City Council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss, consider, and if deemed appropriate, take possible action regarding pending class action litigation against three M Company and E.I. DuPont, Demers and Company and other defendants involving... Look at this, I, I spelled it out phonetically, and I still can't.
Polyfluoracil.
Polyfluoracil substances filed in United States District Court, District of South Carolina, and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take necessary, take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the City of Moore as authorized by twenty-five statute three oh seven B four. Do I have a motion to move, to convene to executive session?
Make a move, motion that we convene to executive session? No? I thought you said do it. No. Okay.
Pretend like we're...
We make a motion that we do not?
The, the information that our attorneys were gonna present to us tonight, they were unable to get, they had anticipating having it, so there's no reason to convene to executive session tonight.
I read the email, Brooks.
Yeah, so now I say, oh, seeing no motion, we'll now move to adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
We're adjourned.
Melissa? Yes.
Oh, sorry, yes. We're now adjourned.